Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth Select Board Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank the candidates for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting about 30 minutes. Responses will not be timed and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to about five questions, but that will depend on the length of the responses along with any follow-up discussion during this exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered or that they would like to add clarification to at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. Let's get started. Today, we're speaking with Charlie Bletzer, who's one of the four candidates in the special election for the Select Board. Welcome, Charlie.
Thanks, Julie. Thank you for inviting me.
Well, great to have you. I'm glad that all four candidates could do this.
My pleasure.
We're gonna start with a couple of questions and then we'll just have a back-and-forth on it. What is your motivation for running for this position right now? Especially given the fact that you're gonna have to rerun again if you win in the spring? And also, you're running for the position of a Select Board member. In your opinion, or in your view, what is exactly the job of a Select Board member?
Okay.
So it's a double-edged sword there.
Okay. My motivation for running really was, I think a Select Board position is so important. And, you know, I've been involved in politics and local politics, you know, for 20, 25 years since I've been down here. And I saw what happened, you know, with one of the Select Boards quitting the position, which I think is a very important position. And, you know, people counted on her to fill that term. And I just didn't like the way that ended. So I got kinda mad and I said, "You know what? It's time for me to do it." I had thought about it in the past, but I said to myself, "I'm gonna do it." So that was my motivation right away. I care about Plymouth. I love Plymouth. I came here as a young child when I was six years old. My father bought a home sight unseen, a cottage down on White Horse Beach. And the first night I ever came to Plymouth, first day, was July 3rd, which as we all know, it was like coming to Disneyland for a six-year-old.
Sure.
So my three brothers and myself at the time came and I absolutely loved it. And here it is almost 60 years later, and I still love it just as much, if not more. So it was time for me to give back to the community. The community's been so good to me. I have two great jobs in this community. You know, I'm Assistant Chief Court Officer at the Plymouth Trial Court. And we do great work there in the community. It's a community courthouse. And I've been able to help so many people in the community, especially through the opioid crisis, which we know how serious that is.
Yeah.
And so it's been a great feeling. It's great when people come up to you in the community and thank you for what you've done for their son or daughter, or husband, or wife. So it makes me feel good. I'm proud. And I was brought up like that. My father and mother brought us up, my kids, my siblings, to work hard, have a good, strong work ethic. Never forget your family. Don't forget where you came from and work hard. And that's what we've tried to do. And help people, excuse me, help people. And that's what I've tried to do. My other job at East Bay Grill, I meet so many people. And I was on the ground floor when that opened up. I was there from day one. And back then, you know, in 2000, the community wasn't thriving like it is today. I mean, the waterfront wasn't that busy. There was only a few restaurants down there. Now, look what's happened to the waterfront. And I've been a part of that. I really, and I've met so many wonderful people. We got involved in Pine Hills. We opened up the, we took over the food and beverage for the golf course there. Again, meeting another community up there in the Pine Hills, all the people up there. So I've watched that evolve and it's been great. And I learned about the town from East Bay Grill Monday and Tuesday nights. Well, my nights working. And by 10 o'clock, the place was kinda quiet. I would get all the boards, Select Board, Planning Board. It depends what night it was. I'd have the zoning board. And I also the people that presented, all the lawyers that were coming and presenting the articles, presenting the petitions or whatever they were doing. And the Town Planner. I used to sit with Lee Hartman and he'd talk about the town. And I get to know the ins and outs of how the town works. And it was very interesting to me. So anyway, here I am 21 years later and I feel it's my turn to give back to my community and to use my strong work ethic and dig in and try and help with some of the issues that we have faced in Plymouth.
That's great.
Sorry for the long answer.
Oh, no, that's fine. There is some confusion amongst the people out there as to exactly what is the Select Board responsible for. Can you, in two sentences, sum that up?
Yeah. They appoint committees. They approve licenses. That's a big part. They okay the budget, very involved with the budget. That's really, you know, we don't enact laws. They do enact bylaws. Actually, the town meeting would do that, but, you know, we don't create legislation like some people think. So, but that's really the most important is people coming, you know, for licenses and things like that. That's what the Select Board does.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to question number two. If that's okay with you. Plymouth is the largest town by land area in the state using one of the oldest forms of town government in the country. In your opinion, has Plymouth outgrown the town meeting form of government?
My opinion of that is we have to look at all forms of governments. The Charter Commission was formed for that reason. It's a review commission. We do it every five years. And I think it's very important that commission that they look at all forms of government. They look at as many towns, and I watched one of the meetings and they were doing that. They mentioned a few towns. But they have to look at all city managers, mayor, city council, you know, different forms of government to find out, you know, what is best for Plymouth. I think town meeting the way it is right now, I think it's too slow. We're so, we're getting so big right now. We have so many issues that I would like to see government move a little bit quicker in Plymouth. So have we outgrown it? I'd like to see the other, I'd like to hear from the commission and see what their ideas from other forms of government.
That we come up with, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So when you say it's too slow, is that because you have to wait twice a year?
Yes, twice a year.
To enact or to vote on
Right.
large legislative processes or capital, or is that what you mean by too slow?
That's what I mean about it.
And why is that a detriment to the town of Plymouth?
Because, yeah, we need to get, for instance, if we need to get, let's just use our buildings.
Okay.
And we need to get repairs. Right now, we can't do it right away. We have to wait. And by that time, the problem could get much worse. And that's one situation that I'm talking about.
Yep. That if you had a different form of government, you might be able to handle those things on a much more
Immediately, yes.
Immediate. And monthly or weekly instead of, yeah, instead of biannually.
Right. And, you know, I think, I mean, I'm a town meeting member myself. And sometimes I see, there's a lot of people on there that just vote no on everything. And there's other people that vote yes on everything. So I think people gotta, we need to think more about what we're voting on. We really do. And I'm saying that as a town meeting member.
Yeah.
I'm not criticizing town meeting because I'm one of them, but I'm just saying that I think we all have to think.
Yeah.
And really think about what we're doing, so.
Plus, there's a huge amount of responsibility on town meeting members to know an awful lot of information.
Right.
And it's unpaid. Clearly, it's an unpaid position.
You just said it right. The information. It's incredible.
Yeah.
You know, you go to some of the carcasses, not the carcasses, but you go to some of the precinct, you know, meetings, you know, for a couple of nights before town meeting. And then it just goes bing, bing, goes real quick.
Yeah.
So you're right. There's so much information that
Yeah.
And we're not
It astounds me.
We're not professionals.
Yeah.
You know, so it's not paying, but
And you're not paid.
We have a $270 million budget. That's a lot.
That's a lot.
That's a big budget.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, and who knows where it's gonna go.
Yeah.
But it's, we're a growing town.
Yeah.
We have, you know, so many new issues coming before us now.
Absolutely. Can I just ask you, while we're talking about town meetings and town government and voting, the amount of people that don't vote is pretty astounding. What do you say to that? Now, what would you do as a select person to try to change that?
We have to let people know, and I'm doing this in my campaign right now. I'm going to different areas of Plymouth that I've been to a couple of areas that don't vote. And I'm trying to impress upon them that if you wanna be heard, vote. I mean, that's, when I was 18 years old, my father made me sign up for the vote. Took me right down to the Annex, Town Hall Annex in Brighton. And I had to register for the draft and to vote. And I've voted every election my whole life. And he did the same thing. He died when he was 91.
Wow.
And right up until they say, who, because when he moved to Plymouth, it always asked me who we voted for. But that was so important there. In the later years when he wasn't feeling well, absentee voted, but always voted.
Why do you think there's so much voter apathy?
I just, I think there's a lot of apathy in this country, you know, and I don't wanna really get into it. But people have to understand that the government is of the people, for the people. You know, if you're unhappy, vote. Change. You can make a difference. You can change things by voting.
Right.
I really think people have to take it a lot more serious. I try and tell my kids that.
Yeah.
They're all registered and I try and tell that. When you're voting, look at who you're voting for.
Right.
And make sure it's the person you want. Doesn't have to be who I support.
Right.
It doesn't, except for me. I hope they vote for me, my kids, but it's so important. And I don't know if it's, if it's the generation thing, I don't know what it is, but it's so important to vote because that's the only way you can make a change.
Right.
I used to always say, "If you haven't voted, don't stop complaining."
Exactly. And if you wanna vote, you have to be informed. So that leads me kinda to my next question, which is about, oh no, this is different. Actually, I think I'm gonna ask you that question and then I'll go back to this one. So given society's thirst for instantaneous information and responses, what is your opinion on the use of social media by any department or board or committee for the purpose of dispersing or collecting information or opinions? What are the advantages or disadvantages? And do you think that's an effective way for boards or committees to communicate with the public?
Social media today, that's what everybody does today. It's so effective. It reaches so many people, social media. It's, you know, this is the first time I've been involved with social media, this campaign. And I've seen how effective it is. So, you know, I'm on the PGDC and, you know, our website, we finally got a real good website a few years ago. And it's made a huge difference. We don't get, we don't get the complaints because now we can say, "Just go to our website."
Right.
It's so informative. So I'll use the PGDC as an example.
Yeah.
That we, the social media is very informative to the public.
Well, a website is a little different than social media. Now, social media too, I think a lot of people feel that social media is not being used effectively. Or the information that you're getting might be factual or it might be an opinion.
Okay.
And when you're on a board or a committee
Let me change my answer.
Yeah, it's hard to tell.
If it's factual,
Yep.
I'm for it.
Okay.
If it's an opinion, I'm not for it.
Right. Okay.
So if it's factual information, that I think is important to get to the public. Opinions, that's, you know, let the public form their opinions. Send the facts to the public
Yeah.
And let them have their opinion on us.
Okay.
So if that's clear to, if you get what I'm trying to say.
Nope, no, I do.
I don't think, I don't think anybody, any elected official should be trying to sway somebody with their opinion if it's not factual. That's for sure.
Sure, sure. And how do you think boards and committees can communicate more effectively? So that people do know what's going on, that people want to be engaged, that they wanna get involved? How can, I mean, people's attention spans is like this. How do you get people to be engaged in what's going on in the town? Because it affects everybody.
I don't know the answer to that. I just, it's frustrating. They don't vote because they're not informed.
Right. It's a
Yeah.
It's the rat on the wheel.
To me, you know, people seem to only go to a board's meeting or look at it on TV or if it's something that affects them personally.
Yeah.
But to me, there's so much going on in the planning board every Tuesday, well, planning board every Tuesday night and the Select Boards, zoning boards.
Sure.
So I
Even the finance. I mean, if you follow a finance committee, if you actually watch all the meetings, you can know every dime that's being spent in this town.
Right.
And so everybody has the ability to actually get the information. We seem to have a problem having people take it.
Yeah, yeah. I'm focused on trying to get the boards to work together.
And do you think the Select Board can have a good impact on that?
I think so, yeah. We have to, we have to figure out how to get it to the public. I mean, you know, it's, you know, but the one thing I wanna talk about is the boards working together.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, we get a situation going on right now. And I'm not afraid to say it here, is you got the planning board and the Select Board on the same night, in the same room.
Well, it can't be in the same room. Well, I guess it can be. Scattered time.
One's at six, one's at seven.
Yeah.
Well, the six o'clock goes sometimes to nine o'clock.
Right.
I saw that a couple of weeks ago. And that really bothered me. And it really bothered me because there was a situation there and one chairman had to say something to another chairman, and that's not right.
What is your solution to that?
Working together. Sitting down, and you're gonna hear this a lot from me, sitting down and talking. Okay? And working together for the, in the best interest of Plymouth. Doing what's best for the people of Plymouth, so. And I think, I believe in talking and I believe in it's a solution. You know, talk about, talk about the problems.
Yep.
And you can solve it a lot better by talking than fighting. And I see that a lot.
Yeah.
And one thing I'll tell you that if I, when I get on this board, there's not gonna be fighting on the board because you can't have that. You can't have what happened before and you need to work together. We're not gonna agree.
I was just gonna say, you're five totally different people, so you're not gonna always speak with the same voice.
And I've served with Dicky before. I've served with Patrick on PGDC. They're both at one point on there. And we're not gonna agree all the time.
Right.
We can respectfully disagree. And you gotta, but you gotta listen. You know, I'll have an opinion sometimes and then I'll listen to the other side and I'll change my opinion. That's happened to me a lot in the PGDC. That's why, I mean, I'm the second longest tenured member there. And I've dealt with all different kinds of folks on that board.
Yep.
And, you know, we've done a lot of work. We've got a lot done because we work together to get it done. That's what I think the Select Board has to do.
Okay.
So, you know, and I don't mean to be so vague about the social media. It's still kinda new to me.
Yeah.
It's been very effective on my campaign.
Sure. And so you can see, it's very powerful, especially if you're a newbie to it, you can realize, wow.
But the part about the facts,
Yeah.
We only deal with facts.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you know, there's no, you know, fake news or whatever going on that. So I'm against that completely, so.
All righty. Okay, here's one. Although not specifically under the purview of the Select Board, what is your opinion on the tax burden that is placed on the residents for maintaining services and infrastructure versus increased commercial economic development? Then you also have to consider open space. You have to consider tax, the taxing of the commercial versus the personal and they're at the same rate. Should they be at different rates? It's a huge subject. Go ahead and try to dig into that one.
Everything revolves around, you know, it's all part of the same
Right.
The tax. A residential, a commercial tax revenue is inadequate to, for, that's why it's such, it's inadequate. We're trying to get to it. We need to get to at least a 30%. It's about 10% now.
The commercial tax
Yeah.
revenue that we get?
Yeah.
Of all the revenues, only 10%?
Only about 10%, okay. The residential
Is 90?
Everything else, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a serious problem. How do we solve that?
Right.
First of all, we have to, we have to increase our commercial developments. And we have to, we have to, first of all, fill all the commercial space that's already available right now that's not filled. We get some over in West Plymouth. You can see some, you know, the different areas. The industrial park has openings as well.
Now, when you say fill the commercial areas that are already approved to be commercial development, fill with what?
Commercial, commercial.
But is there any specific type of industry you wanna see?
Depends what you're talking about. If it's the industrial park, we need office, you know, and I'd like to see, like, offices bring businesses in, into the town. In the, in the commercial over by Market Basket, you'd see more like more retail-type stores. And I'd like to see higher-end stuff over there too. But in the industrial park, you wanna see office. I wanna see higher-paying jobs come to Plymouth. I think it's very important. So we have to, and then we have to identify. One of my keys is, they did a study a few years ago, which I can't wait to look at. Because we have to identify, 106 square miles of land we have.
Right.
And we have to identify the areas that are attractive to commercial development.
Right.
And we have to, we have to work with the planning board, the zoning boards, the environmental people, you know, all the different boards, work together and identify those tracts of land and talk to developers too. We need to talk to developer. We need to talk to both sides. And I get this, a lot of this information from the Town Planner. And then we zone it commercial only. And when the developments come through, the boards have to do their job. We have to make sure that the environment and the neighborhoods aren't negatively impacted by this development. I know people have called me and they're, you're afraid of, you know, how it's gonna impact. Well, we have to use open space. Open space is key too. The Open Space Committee, key. So we have, we have to buffer these industrial areas and buffer them for the neighborhoods. So they, and we've got wildlife to consider too.
Right.
As we lose open space, we have wildlife that has nowhere to go. Where are they gonna go? They're gonna go into your neighborhoods. So there's a lot, there's a lot going on there.
Yeah.
But we have to work together. Again, we have to work together,
Yep.
all the boards and do what's in the best interest of the town.
So just to piggyback on the commercial development, what about, you said you wanna have people to be able to come here and have high-paying jobs. Right now, people can't afford to live here.
Yep.
What do we do for those folks?
Affordable housing. What is affordable housing?
Yeah, what is affordable housing? That's a big question.
First question. And I'm a guy, I can tell you my background, that I had a summer house on White Horse Beach. I bought that in 87 for my father. So I had a condo in Boston and I had my summer house. And then when I got married in 93 and I had a child a year later and I was gonna have a second child, it was time to, I need to move to a home. I couldn't afford to live in my hometown in Boston. So I went down to my second home,
Yeah.
which I had, I had roots there, thank God.
Yeah.
And I was familiar. So I was able to move down to Plymouth in my little cottage.
Yep.
And it was 1,000 square feet. We winterized it.
Yeah.
And I brought my kids up there for a few years till I was able to afford, I sold both units, both, and I've bought a house in West Plymouth. But I was a victim of what you're talking about.
Right.
And I would love to have my kids, if they wanna choose to stay, or not just my kids, but
Any kids, yeah.
any kids, to be able to live where they grew up. And right now, it's not affordable in Plymouth.
Right.
So, you know, we have some affordable housing. I know there's been some private-public, it was one down in Manhattan. There was one by Market Basket that created some units, rental units that are affordable in perpetuity. And I was for that. I voted for that as a town meeting member. At first, I was concerned with the public-private. I didn't get it.
Yeah.
But then I realized what I was doing.
Yeah.
So we need more of that. And we have to work with the developers to try and, you know, convince them how important it is and see if we can get the develops, some of the developers to cooperate, you know. So it's, we have to also, look, we gotta look to other towns. We got, Hyannis has a program, a business program that was brought to my attention, that they built some affordable housing for the workers
Yeah.
that so they could work and be close to where they're working. That's important, so we have to figure that out.
Yeah. I know that the Vineyard and Nantucket are struggling with that.
Yeah.
You know, the seasonal workers certainly can't afford to live there.
The price of real estate is, I mean, in Plymouth, imagine what Nantucket is, but
Sure, yeah.
So, I mean, I get it. It's
There's a lot of, and it's all connected, you know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you, you need your workers, you need them close by, so.
Yeah.
But I haven't got the complete answer, but I will support any kind of affordable housing and, you know, whether it's with the community preservation monies or, you know, I will support any of those projects.
Is there anything that, any subject that you wanna bring up? Anything that you wanna really talk about because you feel passionate about?
Tourism.
Tourism. Okay, go.
Number one industry is tourism. You know, I mean, I obviously work part-time on the waterfront at East Bay Grill.
So you see it.
And I see, we need, we need things for our tourists.
Like what?
Well, I'll tell you what we don't need. I don't want any more condos, any more apartments on the waterfront. It's, tourists don't wanna come and look at apartments and condos. And think about it, when you go to different resort areas, that's not what you wanna look at. We need, we need retail, but I'd like to see some higher-end retail to complement, you know, shops, to complement some of the shops we already have. In the new building on 150 Water, you get some high-end spots there. There's a few high, I think that's great. I love seeing that. So I'd like to see some of that and just tourist-related businesses. There's a restaurant going in where Papageno's was. I was concerned. I thought that was gonna be another development, but it's not. There's gonna be a restaurant going in. I think that's good.
But for tourists that wanna come down for the day,
Right.
where do they park? How do they get here? How do they get around? How are they walking around with bags of stuff that they've purchased in the stores that we want them to buy things in?
Well, how do they get around? We have, parking is obviously close to me being on the PGDC. So we've created, we've tried to create, we've created almost 500 spots since I became involved. And we bought that MTA parking lot by the 1620 Hotel. That's 170 spaces, 175 parking spaces that we paid a half a million dollars for. And that was a steal, as it turned out.
Yeah.
When you look at the $5.7 million parking structure for 172 spaces
Right.
up by the Town Hall.
Yep.
So, and we did that too. I'm proud of getting that done. It was too much money, but we got it done. We also have created, we bought the Santander Bank and there's 80, there was 85 spots there that we kept public parking.
Yep.
Okay, it's very important to all the businesses. We also have two free lots that we've been leasing down near Nelson, Nelson Beach.
Yep.
We did that because of the overflow when they did the Nelson Beach project. It was inadequate parking, so we added those two parking lots. And this is about 100 spaces right there. And then the Morton School, we leased that now. They were able to use that. That's all free parking. Those three lots are free parking, so.
What about a shuttle now to get?
So we're working right now, if you, it's called the Circuit. The Circuit right now, we were supposed to start and then COVID hit.
Right.
So we, $100,000, we donated to, I think we had to give it to the
Through the chamber?
I think we gave it to the chamber.
Or see Plymouth, something, yes, so that you could
Yeah.
I remember hearing about that, yeah.
But we, we did that, $100,000. And then the COVID hit, so we didn't do it. It's gonna be three vehicles to start. And they will, they'll be in the downtown and waterfront areas doing just what you
Yeah, just doing the loop.
It's a free app, so, for instance, Sam at Anna's Harborside. And I'm having, we're having dinner. I'm almost finished. But we wanna go over to the craft beer store over up in downtown Plymouth.
Yep.
We don't feel like walking. Cause we've been out, we get bags.
Yep.
You just get on the app. It's a free app. And they tell you, and they come and they'll pick you right up and they take you there.
That's great.
It's a five-passenger. We need, we need things like that. As far as a shuttle goes, we tried that before. There was a trolley that we had years ago that didn't work out. So I'm not sure how well that will work.
But plans are percolating. Okay.
Plans are percolating. And we have to, I keep saying this, we have to keep looking to our neighbors, to other areas similar to us.
What are they doing?
What do they do? We have to do that.
Okay. We only have a minute left for you to face the camera and tell people why you want them to vote for you.
Well, I've gotten a lot of support. There's a reason for that support and I'm proud of it. Uh, I, I've met a lot of people in this town and I've helped a lot of people in this town. It's because it's what I do. It's not because I'm looking for anything in return. And I certainly never thought I'd be running for office. But now that I am, I just want you, I want everybody to know that I'm a hardworking guy. I'm not gonna change. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna serve with transparency, honesty, integrity and ethics. I can tell you that right now. Uh, that's the promise that I'll make. I, I will do when an issue comes up. I, I don't, I don't have all the answers. I'm not, I, I, I might not be the smartest guy in the room, but I will look to the smartest guy in the room and I will ask questions. I'm gonna, like I said, I'm gonna do my research. I'm gonna talk to experts. We have a lot of fantastic people that already work for the town that I will use to as, you know, as resources. And I will make my decisions that's what I feel is in the best interest of Plymouth. My agenda is Plymouth, the people of Plymouth.
Thank you, Charlie, for participating in this interview and we wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign. And for our viewers out there, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, visit our website, packtv.org/elections for replay times and online viewing options, including Pack TV's on demand and streaming service, Pack TV Prime. And please make your choices heard by voting in the special election on Saturday, August fourteenth. Thank you and good day.